I don't have an extra.
There should be one in there. I usually keep extras.
Thank you.
Yeah.
The time is 4:30 p.m. Pelican Rapids City Council meeting of eight, April 2025 is called to order. I'd ask those in our council chambers if you have not signed the clipboard by the back door, if you'd please do so before you leave this evening. And also I ask everyone to put their cell phones on vibrate. There will be a public hearing at 5:00 p.m., so we'll recess our city council meeting, go to the public hearing and then reconvene our city council meeting after the public hearing. We'll call members. Daniel?
Councilmember Steve Shan.
Here.
Councilmember Shelley Gumminger.
Here.
Councilmember Kurt Markgraf is absent. Councilmember Don Perrin.
Here.
And Mayor Brent Frazier.
Here. I want to welcome each and every one of you here in our city council chambers, also those joining us by Zoom this afternoon. Our city council meetings are shown on Pelican Rapids YouTube channel and also on Channel 14 on Wednesday evenings. Just a few announcements for the next few weeks. And I say few, meaning three weeks. Our next city council meeting won't be for three weeks. Thursday, April 10th, here at 2:00 p.m. is our local board review and equalization meeting here at the city council chambers. Monday, March 14th, 4:30 to 6:00 p.m. is Pelican Rapids Complete Streets Open House at the library, but that isn't a Monday, is it? That's a Thursday. Thursday, Thursday, excuse me, Thursday, April 14th.
Thursday, April 17th.
Seventeenth, okay, thank you. Thursday, April 24th, conversations with the mayor at the library from 10:00 to 11:00 a.m. Friday, April 25th is Arbor Day. And then our next city council meeting will be here on April 29th at 4:30 p.m. in the city council chambers. So that's three weeks till our next city council meeting. Any other announcements? Any other announcements? Hearing none, if we all please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number two is citizens' comments. Anyone here in council chambers here have something to say other than being on the city council agenda? Anyone in the audience? Okay, seeing none. Go on to item number three, additions, deletions to the agenda. I have one addition. Item number 14 is Ridge Crest Lot slash Wetland Discussion. Item number 14 is Ridge Crest Lot slash Wetland Discussion. Any other additions or deletions?
I'm hopeful to approve of the addition of 14 Ridge Crest Wetland.
Second?
Second.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same, motion carried. Item number four is approval of consent agenda, which I'll read. Item number four is approval of council minutes from March 25th, 2025. Four B is approval accounts payable listing. Four C is Household Hazardous Waste Day on August 6th, 2025, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Item four D is certified to pay property taxes for replacement of sewer lines at 20% per year for five years. That's at 315 Third Avenue Southeast here in Pelican Rapids. The amount due is $6,668.681 cents. And item four E is staff report, which is the police report, which is in your packet. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
The mood.
Second?
Second.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same, motion carried. What on item number five, library report. We have our library director here this evening. Marie? Their, their report was also handed out, which is, which is on our desk, okay?
Hello, everybody. The library is going really well. We are finalizing all of the activities for our summer program, which is Level Up at Your Library this summer. We also have a spoken word coming at the end of the month. And we just got the grant through Oktoberfest to add a picnic table underneath the awning. So once we get that in, we'll have a picnic table so people can come and read and have a place to sit in the summer months. I do have some sad news to share. KKO is resigning from the library board due to health reasons. So we are working on getting names to Brent to fill that seat. And then he will interview the replacements and give a replacement suggestion, so. But overall, it's going great. Does anyone have any questions?
Any questions? Any questions on the report? Okay, hearing, hearing none, is there a motion to approve the library report? Second?
Second.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same?
You're welcome. Thank you for having me.
Thank you. Let's jump down to item number 10, Street and Parks Report. And we have superintendent Brian Olson with us here and looking at hiring aquatic director and also lifeguards. Brian?
Yes, well, just give me my brief report here and then we'll, we'll go into that. As far as the street department goes, we have, well, I attended the annual county weed meeting in Fergus and I hadn't been to one for quite a while. And it was all the same. It's, just talks about the noxious weeds that are out there and the different new species and ones that are going off the noxious list. And it was, it was good. Have had, got to plow a couple of times even. Probably noticed if you've been on any of the gravel roads, they got pretty beat up, just soft and different things. We did move snow downtown the one time. And then last time I had Eggy's remove it just due to the amount of it. Had a sewer service problem in the southeast outside of the one you just approved for assessing. And that one was, was also on Third Avenue, but their service runs over to Second. And we were unable to locate the water line. And the excavator that was working on it found it for us. So that is why we lost water in the southeast about a week and a half ago and most of the portion of it anyway. The annual PPG ultralight fly-in will be held July 18th through the 20th this year. And that's the ones that fly with backpacks and parachutes. And there's a whole group of them that gather out at the airport. You may see a few of them straggling a little earlier. But they're out there, it's open to the public. If you'd like to go out and watch them, they usually fly early, earlier in the morning and later in the evening when there's less wind. So, May 18th, I know it seems like it's a long ways away, but that will be hydrant flushing, just to get that word out. 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. And that's about on the streets, the parks. We've just been working on, spending most time repairing and painting picnic tables this time of the year. So that is where we're at. And then if we want to jump into the.
Any questions on the report?
Finish that one?
If not, is there a motion to approve the report?
The mood.
Second?
Second.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same, motion carried, okay.
All right. We will start, I'd like to approve the hire of Ally Jessen as the aquatics director. She's at a rate of $22. And all of the following lifeguards that I'll list are at a rate of $17. If one of, I'd like to hire them pending them passing the certification. So if they do not pass, then we, we will not hire them officially. But, and then you see if they may have a water safety instructor. A couple of them had shown interest in that and that's able to teach swimming lessons. And that pays 17.50, but I'll let you know if we get one of those at a later date. So for the lifeguards, I'd like to get approved Grace Backstrom, Aubrey Hoodley, Hazel Howgroot, Addison Tweeton, Hayden Howgroot, Corey Upsoll, Zoel Jacobson, Kendall Kruger Pierce, Kazlyn Erickson, Natalia Villagomez, Adriana Barca, Tiana Barca, Brendan Hampton, Faith Bampton, and Brooklyn Scoplet, I believe that's how it's said there. Those are the applications we've had so far. And I'm actually pretty impressed that we, we've got that many, so it's exciting.
Are you looking for a motion to approve the aquatics director and the?
All of, actually, I'm going to approve the aquatics director first. I'm sorry, let's do that because then I want the certification on the lifeguards if I could.
So is there a motion to approve aquatics director, Ally Jessen?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same, motion carried.
And then the following will be hired pending, pending their certification, pass, passing their certification.
I hear a motion?
Yeah, move to approve the list.
Second?
Second.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same, motion carried.
Perfect, thank you very much.
Thank you. Let's go to item number eight, West Central Initiative Presentation Update. We, we have Ben Shire, Mallory Jarvie, and Commissioner Kurt Mortensen with us here this evening. They're different than the names that are on our agenda, but we welcome you this evening. Take it away.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. My name is Ben Shire. With West Central Initiative, I'm the director of Civic Partnerships. And Mallory Jarvis is, Jarvie, sorry, is from our Transportation Department. And of course, you know Commissioner Kurt Mortensen, who serves as the chair of our ED Economic Development District Board of Directors. So wanted to take a few minutes tonight just to talk to you about some of the work. We, once a year, we come and visit you, as you know. And West Central Initiative serves nine counties and a portion of the White Earth Nation. We're one of six initiative foundations that were established in 1986 by the McKnight Foundation, serving all 80 counties outside of the seven county metropolitan area. So in that capacity, we're a community foundation doing a, a number of different projects and work in the area. In that, in the nine counties and the portion of White Earth that we serve, I think it just, in addition to the nine counties, there's 82 cities. There are 35 school districts, 235 townships. There's 410 units of government and all. And really, the work that we do through that community foundation works because of the relationships that we have in, in communities. So that's, that's really why we're here tonight. The, the annual report, you'll see there's a check on the front. And Mayor, I'm sorry to say, you're not able to cash that check. That check is actually just, it's a representation of the funds that have gone into your local community through West Central Initiative since, since we were started in 1986. So that's anything from grants. And you'll see on the last page of your report tonight, the grants that we issued in 2024 include the Bridge Center in Pelican Rapids. They also include the, the high school, the Viking Boutique. So there's a number of, and, and I'm really, I think you, we have a close partnership and relationship with Pelican Rapids, so we're really, we're happy for that. And Brent, Mayor Frazier, we're really thankful for your leadership. One thing I'll, I'll note, and then I'm going to turn it over to my colleagues. But if you page through this at your leisure, you'll see that a number of different programs. If you pay, turn to page eight, eight and nine, this talks about the World Democracy Project. And just a couple, this is just one example of the ways we're working in communities. There's a number of different, we're working to, to train the next generation of leaders. We're also working to support existing leaders. And we've worked with Mayor Brent here in the city of Pelican Rapids. One example is Griffin Peck from our organization has been in front of you with the Solar Cohort on municipal buildings, which ultimately you will decide on. But the goal there is to connect communities with the resources to save taxpayer, payer dollars. And so we're really fortunate to have communities like yourselves. And the other one is, is the library. We're hosting an event at the public library on Wednesday, April 23rd. So just a couple of weeks, a couple of weeks from now. I guess that's next week, isn't it? Two weeks from tomorrow, sorry, thank you. And, and that's a, and that actually started, partnership in, in Pelican Rapids happened after Mayor Brent wrote the, his letter to the, or his weekly column in the Pelican newspaper, just about the importance of, of local journalism. And it tied in nicely with one of the initiatives that we're working on. And that is to support local journalism, make citizens aware of, of the, some of the challenges that local journalism face, but also the importance to a local community and the tie-in. So looking forward to that event at 5:30 at the Pelican Rapids Library. I think Mayor Brent is going to be able to be there. The local representatives from the local newspaper are going to be there. We're going to watch a film and then have a, just a community conversation. The whole idea is to get people together to talk about issues that are important to their community. So with that, I want to thank you for your, for your partnership. And then I want to just maybe Mallory can talk real briefly about some of the transportation and then we'll talk about the economic development.
Yeah, along with our world democracy work, we also are a planning agency in the region, along with the Initiative Foundation. So I am a transportation planner. And we have done so much work in Pelican Rapids these past couple of years. We serve on multiple steering committees, including the Trails Plans that have been conducted in Pelican, the Heart of the Lakes Trail that is almost done or inches away, and the Complete Streets Project that was done by MINDOT. So we help support what Pelican's best interests and advocate for you on that. On that front, we also do safe process school planning. So I was the principal planner on the Safe Process School Plan that was completed in 2023. And through that plan, we were able to get some great custom bike racks that you can see at the trailhead with the Vikings. So that was through that planning process and the bike racks. Then in front of the elementary school, we're also through a grant that West Central Initiative applied for to give our, our schools bike racks, which you were a part of. We also provide technical assistance on your grant applications. So in 2028, there'll be sidewalks built in the south of town. You may be aware, we provided assistance to the city filling out that pretty tedious transportational alternatives application. That's a federal grant. And if you turn to page 18, there's a picture of Pelican, really highlighting your, your transportation work. I'm also a cycling instructor. So this is a picture of me teaching one of your PE classes at the elementary walk and bike safety. So it's fun to work with all ages in transportation in your community. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor Frazier, members of the council. Thank you for allowing us to come before you today. I'm a member of the West Central Initiative Economic Development, Economic Development Board. And Mr. Shire mentioned to me when I entered the door today that he promised that we would be brief, and I'm going to take that to heart. So if I could, if I could summarize the work of the Economic Development District, it would, it allows for communities in West Central Minnesota to qualify for federal assistance for infrastructure projects. A number of municipalities in the county have taken advantage of that. City of Purham, some years back, for water treatment. More recently, the city of Fergus Falls received the grant as a result of the closing of the, the lake plant. And again, that was channeled through the Economic Development District. There's, there's other work that that does for the communities. West Central Initiative is involved with housing studies that are required in order for communities to apply for housing grants. One example of that, more very recent example of that would have been Dalton Northfields for two triplexes. The city of Battle Lake, Hidden Meadows, again, a housing study was done. And also it provides for gap funding of course, small businesses, where financing through the financial institutions doesn't get a business where they need to be in their, that gap funding. So I said it's going to be brief, I'll live up to that. But again, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, we're really fortunate to have leaders like Commissioner Mortensen on our, on our Economic Development District Board. And I'll just, I'll just close and say this, just to highlight some of the, if you turn to page 12, talks about the economic development and planning. And as Commissioner Mortensen said, last year, more than 8.23 million in our region for infrastructure projects, wastewater treatment, roads, utilities. And then on the other side of that page, on, on page 15, I guess it would be, last year, 15, 15 regional businesses took advantage of our lending program and to the tune of more than $1 million. And there's currently 170 loans. So the economic development impact in our region is real. And again, it's led by elected officials throughout the region and we're really fortunate to have that. And one last thing I'll say is the thing that makes, one thing that makes West Central unique is I mentioned the community foundation portion of it, the economic development and planning. We do both of those. Most organizations of our type do one or the other. We do not have levying authority over the regions. The other 13 regional planning organizations in the state of Minnesota do. And that's why we rely so heavily on the partnerships that we develop with communities to do the work that we're doing. As, as Commissioner Mortensen and Mallory talked about, we, we do that through partnerships with communities. So you guys, on the last page, you'll see, or the second to last page, you guys have been a partner in the past. We very much appreciate that and we look forward to partnering with you. So Mayor, if you have any questions or your council has any questions, we're happy to answer them, but we also understand you have an agenda.
Probably tonight after you leave, we'll think of something. That's the way it always is. Well, thank you, Ben, Mallory, Commissioner.
Thanks so much.
For being here this evening, thank you. Kayla, do you need, Kayla, do you need more than nine minutes?
I don't think so.
Okay, then well, let's go to item number seven, the Otter Express. Kayla Sullivan is here, there was some information in your packet.
Hi, Mayor Frazier and councilmembers, thank you for having me. And I'm Kayla Sullivan, the Director of Transportation for the Otter Express, the public busing system, and this is John.
My name's John Grotes. I'm a project manager for Minnesota, the state of Minnesota, MINDOT. I work with 16 counties in West Central Minnesota. I'm based out of Wilmer.
Okay, thank you.
So we're here just to talk about creating a joint powers board for the Otter Express Public Transportation. I believe that Otter Tail County has already approached, I think, maybe only talked to Lance on this issue. So we're here just to give you a little bit more information on this. And as a little side note, maybe I should explain what public transportation is because I was actually here in Pelican a few weeks ago at the grocery store, at the entryway, and actually I saw the mayor there too. And I talked to different shoppers there and they had no clue what, or they had a skewed view maybe of what public transportation is. So public transportation is actually for anybody, all of you can use it. Anybody can use it. All of our buses have a lift on it. So if you have any mobility issues, we can accommodate you. We can take you pretty much anywhere you want to go. If you want to go to a friend's house, you want to go to the grocery store, you want to go get your hair done, wherever you want to go, public transportation can get you there. It is obviously heavily subsidized by the government, by MINDOT and by the federal, FTA. So it is for everybody to use. So I just wanted to, if you don't know what public transit is, I wanted just to clarify that. So right now for 2025, we are in a contract with Productive Alternatives, which is based out of Fergus Falls. And their Board of Directors decided in February that they didn't want to continue with public transit. So that's why we are here at this point, trying to create a joint powers board so that public transit can continue. So getting down to Pelican Rapids itself, we have just started servicing Pelican Rapids. So we obviously don't have a lot of stats for the community of Pelican Rapids right now. Excuse me. So since the first, or second week in February, I believe, of this current year, we've had 24 scheduled rides as of through today. So yes, you don't have very many yet, but as John maybe can attest to that, once you start in a new community, it just takes a little while for all of the residents to kind of know what we are, who we are, what we do, all that kind of thing. So, and you can maybe say too, that other smaller communities that have started, it takes a little time.
I think it does take some time. My experience working with, again, 16 counties, working with cities similar size to Pelican Rapids, you know, I would certainly expect to see more transportation. I mean, I, I think the need definitely is here, the demand is, is there. So yeah, I'm hopeful that we can put something together where there would be more of a presence here, have a vehicle, a bus presence here, and then you would have more opportunities for your residents. And then, you know, I mean, public transportation, everybody uses them. And I think you could explain to some how many people, different businesses, schools you work with, or preschools maybe?
Uh huh, yeah. So in, in our other communities that we do service right now, we do, do a lot of preschool transportation. Some of the school districts there like have a contract with some other bus company for, you know, the public school, so we're not allowed to do that. But preschools are usually private, so we can. And we do do a lot of that, like just, and summer rec programs, like getting the youth to their baseball games, T-ball games, swimming lessons, you know, all that kind of a thing, we can do that. Just for example, like in Fergus Falls, which, you know, is a bigger city, but we do transport to 46 different businesses, whether it's to work and from work or, you know, vice versa, both. Gosh, I'm trying to think what else we do. Yeah, and I think you all got this little handout in your pamphlet. So that's a little bit of our stats from 2024, financial and our ride numbers. And like John mentioned too, we do have a lot of future growth that could, could occur, being that it's, will be a joint powers board now. And one of the great benefits to joint powers board is you guys have local control. Your community, you know, and the Board of Directors has a say in it. We want, you know, a bus here every day of the week, or we want Saturday service or something like that. So you guys have local say in how this community would be served.
Is there a timeline you're looking at for the joint powers to go into effect?
Yes, we actually have two government entities that have said yes. So legally, we can make this a goal right now. But the more people that come on board would be better. We welcome whoever would want to come on board. And Otter Tail County is actually kind of taking the lead on this right now and setting it up. But the grant through MINDOT is, the deadline is the end of June. So we do have to have all of this in place, preferably, you know, a few weeks before that to get everything in place, sign the resolution and all the contracts, et cetera.
Is the joint powers financial piece based on population?
Uh, no, sort of, but not really. I mean, right now, we're just, you know, I think the budget would be around $2 million for that. So we're, we're requesting, the local entities need provide, need to provide 10% of that operating funding. So there need to be, that needs to come from the local entities in addition to the fares that are generated by the transit system. But on the population piece though, I would expect a community the size of Pelican Rapids though, to have a, a strong public transit presence. I just see a lot of opportunity here in this community. So I don't know if that answers your question, but.
Yeah, yeah. Council have any questions?
Is this free to the public?
No, there is bus fare. So right now, it's based on mileage. So up to, up to five miles is $2 base fare. And then it goes up from there. And the majority of our riders do ride within that five mile range though.
Are you having any public meetings other than this, this afternoon, within?
Within, for Pelican?
Yeah.
I don't have anything scheduled yet, but I would be more than happy to meet here again or at the library or anyplace actually.
Well, you had mentioned that you would like to know if Pelican was on board for the joint powers like by mid-May, is that correct?
Yeah, do you think that's a fair timeline?
They're working on a draft of the actual agreement and then they would present that to each of the communities.
Okay. They would know a number like our financial commitment at that time? I mean, before we have to make a decision, correct?
Yeah, I think, yeah, and we just actually talked to the county Nick and he was alluding to that too, yes.
And we'll have two more council meetings before mid-May, so.
Oh, sure.
That would give us time.
Yeah, so I think it would require a signature of the mayor and your attorney, I believe, on the, on the actual agreement. Obviously, you'd have to make that decision as a council, but that's, and then we would, I'm not going to speak for Kayla here, but you would request at least one member of the council to sit on the joint powers board. If, if you, if you're able to become a vested partner.
So you, you will be back again before mid-May then? When you'll have numbers for us and?
Yeah, I think that would be a fair, I think.
Tonight, I know it's just an informational session.
Yes, yes. I am more than happy to come back to one of your meetings, yes.
I think we should plan that.
Yeah, I mean, if you get us the information. Yeah, I mean, if you give us the information, and we have questions, or it would probably be best if you were here to, when we make, when the council needs to make the decision, would, it would be helpful for you to be here for...
Sure, yeah, I'm more than willing to do that, yes.
Okay, great, great. Any other questions from the council?
Thank you.
Well, if not, thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you, everybody.
Appreciate it. We'll see you again.
Yep, thank you.
Well, the time is exactly 5:00 PM. We'll recess our city council meeting and go into our occasion public hearing, which includes Resolution 2025-10, which was in our packet. Remember, we cannot make any motions during the public hearing. It's just for discussion, and motions can happen after we go back into our city council meeting. So, Lance, I'll turn this portion over to you.
Yeah, so this, actually, Steve Nelson is here. That's kind of the reason why we started this. He wanted access to his property, so I don't know if you have any comments right away, or...
Been a while. I almost forgot about it.
Yeah. I'll pull up an exhibit here, and so, once we started digging into this, we found that there were several, several roads there that have not been, been vacated. So, we were looking at just kind of off of Fifth Southwest there to vacate that portion, and then we found all these other roads in that area that were not. So, Lindsay drafted up the resolution to include all of those roads. Now, this hill street that you see right here, that's actually like the rent-a-road back to the soccer fields there, so that's staying in place as a public road there. But the rest of them will be, are proposed to be vacated and cleaned up, so, and there's really no future use for any of these, especially down in this south area here. I mean, it's all swamp land and, and things, so there's really no potential for developing back there, so...
Did legal say who owns it?
Sir, could you address the microphones so those that are watching us can hear you?
Did legal say who owns it once it's vacated?
Yeah, it'll be split down the middle, and they'll get half, and the other property owner will get, it'll be a split between the property, adjoining property owners.
And then, those two property owners in the, that are essential to me to access that property, was there any easement paperwork done?
Yep, so she, I'll just read what you said. So, she will do a mutual driveway agreement separately for the property owners to sign after this resolution is recorded. She said that's going to be the easiest way to do it. So, it's not included in the resolution, but we will draw up the, basically, driveway easement for you after this resolution is recorded. She said that's going to be the easiest.
The, the 66 feet will be now 33 feet, one side and the other.
Right, right.
Fair enough. I thought you guys would make us bid on it and buy it back.
What do you give us for, give us more? I do have a question quick here, though, for you, just to, just to clarify. I think, I can't find where we're at here now. So, here, so I'm thinking, and I already talked to this property owner as well, but you're going to want an easement through here as well, correct? I mean, you're going to own half of this, but I don't know that that's going to be good...
I wouldn't need that. I mean, depends on...
But it's pretty low back in here?
Depends on how the easement's done. I mean, I can come up, come up here so you guys can see it. I usually go straight through the center here.
Right.
Get past that elm tree, and then I, then I just swing up in there. It's a little low here, so the, and once I get here, the, the way you're doing it, I could be on my property as soon as I get here.
Okay.
And Lance, there is another angle, and I haven't talked to him, and I haven't seen him. I know he lives over by the high school. If I can talk him into selling me his portion, get a quick claim deed, then, then that would just be, you know...
Well, he was more than willing to have an easement through there when I talked to him, too, so...
Yeah, well, I, I was hoping you'd be here. I don't know, nobody, other property owners are here.
Yeah, they were all notified, so...
And, see, the thing is, there's a swamp, and then there's that Cooley, and the whole, I owned it since, like, 2005 or something like that. I've never seen him on this side of the property, so I, as, I do have his number, and I do know where he is, so ask him, maybe he'll even sign a quick claim deed for some money, and then I'll just, I'll have that. I wouldn't mind doing that. I'm going to talk to him, but as soon as I get, he's had stuff, he has stuff here that's kind of extensive, but if I get, I don't know what a trail 12 feet, you know, or just the right to cross over that. And the good part about that, too, is that they'll have, you know, three people to distribute the cost of maintenance of that, that, that road instead of just the two. I don't expect to do it for free, but this tree is in bad shape, too, when you get down there. This is the shadow of that tree. I think the tree's actually like here. And that tree's in bad shape. If that comes out, I can, you know, right around the shed here. I'm unwilling to work with those guys, too, you know, lay it out exactly.
Sure. Well, once, once this is recorded, if it's passed, then I'll, I'll be in touch with you just to make, and our city attorney to make sure we get things right and how it's needed, so...
Yeah, like, this is rented. I don't think the owner lives there. There's, I think there's two, I think there's two people, two houses living there. This guy I meet quite, quite often. I've never seen her, but...
Would it be advantageous at this time to extend that easement further west, even though it's not needed?
Well...
So, we wouldn't have to do this in the future for some reason?
Yeah, we'll be sure to make sure that everything is in order, whether it's an easement, or whether you're buying that, his portion of the vacated street, or whatever. But we'll, we'll be in touch at, like I said, after this is recorded, then we'll, we can get that...
The only friction I've ever, ever gotten off of this is, is this guy, because I had it first, and then he bought in there, and the real estate agent told him, you know, real estate agents, sometimes they, I assume that's the boundary, I assume that's the boundary, you know, that kind of thing. So, he was disappointed when he found out his definition didn't include this, and it didn't go as far back, you know how that goes.
Sure.
That's why you always try to get it surveyed when you buy anything, or, or at least get the legal description and figure out what's going on. I've been disappointed that way several times, but I like tax worth of property, so sometimes people think they own something that they no longer do.
Great. Do you have any more questions, Lance?
Did any of these other guys, you talked, did you talk to this guy?
I talked to the three that the easement would, would affect.
And there was no friction?
Nope. No, they were, they were fine with it.
I like things like that. They're usually, you guys are friendlier than Moorhead. It usually doesn't happen that way there.
Yep.
Well, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you. Any other questions from the council? Any other questions before we close our public hearing? Any other questions? Okay, hearing none, we'll close our public hearing at 5:09 PM, and we'll reconvene our city council meeting, so we'll go to that resolution, number 2025-10, and looking for someone to make a motion to approve this resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Second.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same, motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's go down to number nine, Houston Engineering Pay Request. That was in our packet, and Lance is going to talk to that.
Yeah, this is an invoice for the engineering work for that small little river project by the old Legion Building there off of First Northwest. This will all be reimbursed by the DNR, so it's just got to run through us, and then we can do a reimbursement request through that grant through the DNR, so... I believe this work is scheduled to do, be done this summer or this fall at some point, so...
Looking for a motion to approve pay request?
I'll make a motion to approve the pay request.
Second.
Second.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same, motion carried. Let's go down to item number 14, Ridgecrest Lot slash Wetland Discussion.
Okay, so I've been meeting with our technical evaluation panel, which is, administers the Wetland Conservation Act, so we've had a application. Mike Carlson and the Ridgecrest Lots, he is, will be buying them if he can get, get approved to build on them. So, part of this, we just met last Friday again on this, and we've been meeting often on it, actually. I wanted to just get the map up here so you know what we're talking about. Okay, so here's the lots we're talking about. They're city-owned, and like I said, Mike is in the process of buying if we can get to pass the wetland thing. So, in our discussion this last Friday with Steve from the State Soil and Water Board, he would just like confirmation. So, originally, Mike wanted to build on both of these and fill in this whole wetland. Well, that's not, that's not really an option. We want to minimize the impact on the wetland. So, throughout this process here, we've got it down to one twin home on this lot, this number seven here. And actually, there'll be more on this next council meeting, where we're going to need to get a variance to get the house pushed forward a little bit to minimize the wetland impact even more, but we can talk about that next, next time. But what Steve kind of really wanted from the council was, was a consensus that this lot will be designated as either a wetland area, or a stormwater retention, or an outlot, or something, so it will never be developed again. So, it's, we don't go through this process again, where someone comes in and says, I see this lot, and there's water and sewer there, we want to try and fill in that wetland and things. So, basically, all I need right now is if, if everyone is on board with just kind of designating that as a undevelopable lot, an outlot, whatever. I don't know what it's going to look like, if the city's going to retain ownership and we designate it as an outlot, or how that looks, we'll, we'll figure that out, but as long as the council is all right with kind of designating that as a non-developable Any questions on that?
Questions from the council?
So, the DNR looks at it as a wetlands, and you really can't do anything?
Yeah, well, we, we had it delineated, so we know exactly where that wetland boundary is, and a majority of this lot is wetland. So, in this whole process, when, when Mike had this application to fill some of it in, the number one thing is to prove, or to, is avoidance. So, when we look at it, we want to know what are the, all the possibilities that you could avoid disturbing this wetland. So, we got through that part, and now we're in the part where we want to minimize it as much as possible. So, we want to minimize the impact on this wetland as much as possible. And, yeah, majority of the, of that wetland is on, on that lot number eight. There's some of it that comes into seven. And actually, Mike has got it to a point now where he's under the threshold where he'd have to buy any credits at all. So, with all the stuff that we've done and pushed it forward and all that stuff, he won't have to buy any credits. He's going to disturb a little bit of wetland, but not to the threshold where he'll have to buy credits and things. So, we've got it really minimized to a small amount now.
That's favorable to everybody.
And that's just kind of what Steve wants now, is to make sure that the council is fine with, with designating that lot as a, like I said, how, how it all shakes out, I don't know, but just to make sure that it's not going to be developed in the future.
So, do you have to do anything to the lot? Just all maintain it, or brush, or anything like that, or...
Well, that's the question. I mean, if the, I mean, right now, it's been city lot, and we haven't had to do much for maintenance. I mean, there's garbage and stuff in there that gets picked up sometimes, but that would be about what would take place. I would, if I were to guess, I think the city would probably keep ownership of it and designate it however we need to, like an outlot, or whatever. And Mike is fine with that as well, I mean, moving forward, however it works out. We are going to meet with Bob here Thursday, and so there is kind of a drainage ditch and things here, and a, and a culvert under the road here. We may be looking at trying to get a utility easement, or a drainage easement, whatever, through here to be sure that this, that this stays, that this ditch stays, so that it doesn't cause issues anywhere else. And to kind of look at, make sure when he's filling in, when Mike wants to fill in this area, that he's not going to be affecting the neighbor here as well. So, we will be looking at that this week.
Any questions from the council? Lance, what would, what would the motion read?
Uh, just willingness to be sure that that lot has not developed, or commit to protecting Lot Eight from any future development, how about that?
Anyone willing to make that motion?
That's too bit odd, isn't it?
The DNR probably wouldn't approve it in the future anyway, to use it, right?
Well, that's the whole thing Steve wants, is, I mean, this, they've been talking about these two lots for 20 years. No one's gone to the actual work that Mike has to get it to this point, so this is a win. If we can get this one lot developed with twin home, that's, that's a win.
This lot couldn't be any wider, or...
What do you mean?
It doesn't look, is it big enough for a twin?
Yeah, this one is. Well, they both are, but, yeah, they meet the requirements.
Counsel, how did the motion go again now, or...
Uh, just to commit to protecting Lot Eight from any future development, to protect the wetland.
That's my motion, so moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same, motion carried. Thank you, Lance. Then we'll go on to item number 11, Administrator Report, Lance.
All right, since the last council meeting, I attended a Planning Commission meeting, met with MINDOT officials, and discussed the upcoming construction season and the communication needs for the continuing Highway 59 One Way project. Attended a webinar from the state about cannabis licensing, met with a concerned citizen in the southeast about some property issues, met with Kayla Sullivan about the Otter Express and the proposed joint powers agreement, attended a 315 North Broadway condo association annual meeting, met with the technical evaluation panel multiple times concerning the Wetland Conservation Act and the application for the Ridgecrest Lots, met with city engineer Bob Schleeman about the drainage on the Ridgecrest Lots, met with Melissa Reinhardt of the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust about the downtown sewer backup last fall, worked with People Service and SEH on the monitoring wells and the schedule of completing the requirements of the MPCA, and completed required documents to finalize the PFOS Source Identification Reduction Grant, which we were awarded. Any questions?
Thank you. Thank you, Lance. Item number 12 is Mayor Report. Just a few items in the last couple of weeks. Had a conversations with the mayor at the library on March 27th. Also, Maplewood State Park naturalist, Dora, has monthly sessions at the public library on Saturday mornings pertaining to reading to children, and also hands-on events, and attended that. I know Councilman Strand was there, it was well-attended, and the kids had a great time, as did the adults. Yeah, right. Attended Pelican Rapids Showcase at the high school on March 29th. 31st of March, Pelican Rapids Complete Street Zoo meeting, talking about the public meeting that is going to happen on Thursday, March 29th. Zoo meeting, talking about the public meeting that is going to happen on Thursday, March, April 17th. And we also talked about discussion. It looks like probably the earliest that they'll start the project is, was it 21st of April, Lance?
Yes.
And that all pertains to road restrictions that are still on and weather. Attended a condominium meeting with Vertant Funeral Home and the City of Pelican Rapids here at City Hall with Lance on April 1st. And then, yesterday, met with Administrator Royson to plan the agenda for this afternoon's city council meeting. Any questions?
Thank you.
Seeing no other business on the agenda, is there a motion to adjourn? Second?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same, meeting adjourned. Thank you.
I'm glad we have a lifeguard.